Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this town council meeting to order. It's Monday, November 15th, 2021. It is 7:15 PM here in the McKinnon Council Chambers. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two, roll call.
Counselor Adams?
Present.
Counselor Catrona?
Present.
Counselor Daniel?
Present.
Counselor Dow? Absent. Counselor Jovan?
Present.
Counselor Lazo?
Present.
Counselor Marquetti?
Present.
Counselor Ryan?
Present.
And Counselor Steves?
Present.
We have a quorum. Agenda item number three, consider and accept the town council meeting minutes of Monday, November 1st, 2021. Submove. Any additions, corrections, deletions? Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Page three, under item number 10, it says James Cullers. It's C U L L E R S. That's all I have.
Anyone else? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Any extensions? Very good. A D O. Agenda item number four, subcommittee reports. General Government, Counselor Ryan.
Through you. We did have a meeting last week. We have one agenda item tonight. We will just, I will bring up more discussion points then. I just want to take an opportunity to thank Council Chair John Daniel for running the meeting for me. I had an emergency family matter, and I just want to thank him for stepping in and running that quick meeting for me. I appreciate it.
That's it?
That's it.
Good. Thank you, Counselor Ryan. Department of Public Works, Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. We had a DPW subcommittee meeting on November 9th, 2021, in the Veterans Room. There are five agenda items on tonight's meeting. Agenda item number 15, winter parking ban. Agenda item number 16, convert town lights over to solar lights. Agenda item number 17, winter equipment for hire snowplowing. Agenda number 18, parking permit on Mill Street. And agenda item number 19, storm water management rules. There was also a discussion concerning the sidewalk in front of the Wells Building project, water and sewer bills, and outdoor meters for water use only. Questions about the town hall driveway exit and national grid not cleaning up debris from a utility pole accident. At this time, there are no meetings scheduled. Thank you.
Thank you. Education and Human Services, Counselor Jovan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a meeting on November 8th. There's one item on the agenda. Our meeting lasted three minutes, and that is all. I have no meeting scheduled.
Very good. Thank you. Item D, planning and development, Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next scheduled meetings on the 22nd of November. Did not have one before this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Agenda E, item E, protection of persons and property, Counselor Lazo.
I have no report at this time. We did have a meeting, and we have agenda items 11, 12, and 13 with recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Agenda item number five, Chairman's announcements. I have just a couple. I attended the ribbon cutting ceremony for the new Second Chance Veterinary Hospital on Worcester Street. This facility will provide a much-needed service for our town and its beloved pets. Further, students from Bay Path High School will be offered the opportunity to gain skills in the veterinary field. This is a win-win situation for the town, its pets, and its citizens and students. I offer every good wish to Second Chance in their latest endeavor. I attended the Saturday Night Fights on November 6th held at the Armory. They were sponsored locally by the Veterans Council and the Uptown Boxing Gym. Our veterans are able to publicize their initiative to upgrade and make improvements to the World War Memorial Park on Elm Street and Dresser Park on Main Street. If you are unaware of what our veterans are proposing, you can find information on the Veterans Council Facebook page. Uptown fighters were in six of the 17 bouts that took place that night and acquitted themselves well. They were gracious in handling the results of their matches and put their best foot forward in representing Southbridge to the rest of the state. Kudos to Dave Di Gregorio and his staff for a very positive display of boxing sportsmanship, as well as our hearty congratulations and big thank you to our veterans for their service and sponsoring a terrific night of entertainment. Lastly, but certainly not least, I was able to attend the Veterans Day Memorial Service last Thursday at the World War Memorial on Elm Street. The service was moderated by Sergeant Major David Adams and included speeches by various state and local dignitaries. Also represented was a fine speech from Southbridge High Student Jureles Diaz and appropriate music selections by the Southbridge High School Band. All in all, it was a moving tribute to our veterans on a glorious Thursday morning in Southbridge. That's all I have. Item six, Town Manager's announcements. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the council. I wanted to start off by saying I neglected to mention last meeting we were here that on October 20th, Senator Fatman had come to the town. He brought us a check for $50,000, which was used for the emergency repairs for the HVAC system over at the Police Department. If you recall, we had a catastrophic failure earlier this summer. Both Chiefs, Chief Woodson and Chief Normanan, were on hand, as well as Counselor Adams. You know, we're very grateful for the work that Senator Fatman has done. I'd like to say that we've had a great working relationship with both Representative Duran and Senator Fatman. And when this issue came up, as well as the RMV HVAC, I talked to them extensively about the money that we were putting into the building, and he was able to find some money and bring it back in the form of the repairs over at the Police Department to offset some of the money we used elsewhere. So I'm very appreciative of that, and I neglected to mention that last week. I also want to let you know that late this afternoon, we received notice from the Department of Environmental Protection that we were awarded a Sustainable Materials Recovery Program grant in the amount of $8,800 for our recycling efforts. This was something we received notice of earlier this year, and the council approved the application earlier in June, so we were successful in getting that again this year. On a lighter note, I just want everybody to know that our own Mary Darling, who's sitting to my left, is a playwright, for those of you who don't know. And before we meet again, we may not have time for this announcement, so on December 10th and 11th, at the Jean McDonough Arts Center, Mary is a playwright, and she's also directing her play. And it's going to be there both nights at 7:30. Tickets are available for $25, and there's also an option online to view her play. And I wish her well in this endeavor, and I think she deserves a round of congratulations for her efforts, and we, you know, hopefully some of us will make it. Thank you.
Are you all set? Mr. Manager?
I forgot to mention the name of the play is called Good Grief.
Item seven, presentations and swearing-in. I don't believe we have any tonight. Item eight, citizens' forum. Are there any citizens present that would like to speak to the council tonight on items that are not on the agenda? Any citizens tonight?
I'll go ahead.
I would never interrupt you, Mr. President.
Yes, you would. Yes, you would, Counselor Jovan. And Mr. Jovan, too.
Hi, Denise Clements, 128 Country Club Place. "I'm just going to get right to it. People talk, and I listen. Their concerns, complaints, downright anger, many times mirror my own. Main Street, other street work, and more. The Main Street project appears to be nearing completion. Much of what I have to say may be irrelevant to the final project. No matter, I'm going to put it out there, not so much to the council as to many of you have, as many of you have already voiced similar concerns in subcommittee or in general conversations, but for those out there who may see and feel the same. Many voiced concerns as the main project moved forward, yet the internal attitude appeared to be to just push forward with the plan, little room to stray, even if they knew the long-range result may not be the best one. Most of the problems, subsoil, pipe issues, et cetera, should have been addressed in the pre-game. Such an overall lack of attention or concerns as to how the plan would forever change our town. The real issue, one we have faced for a long time and still do, is the lack of road skillset within the ranks who make the decisions. So much concern with the final product is on the minds of the business people and the citizens. Foremost complaints, beyond the bad curb decisions narrowing entries to our streets and the loss of parking spaces in, is communication. I have been stopped on the streets and asked why there were not more notices, especially to the businesses, on when and how long the roads were to be closed, as if COVID lockdown wasn't enough for struggling businesses. We had Main Street locked down. Citizens asked, why didn't the town use its system to alert people of closures, especially when on some days the entire Main Street area was shut down, causing appointment cancellations, lateness to work, and more? Many of you experienced the same. Where was the leadership on this project? A lot of head shaking. The only thing we have to gain at this point with a project so fraught with missteps and poor oversight is not to repeat these mistakes. We cannot redo the sidewalks that protrude into the intersections like Marcy and Main. Many complaints on that one for the last few weeks. Has anyone else noticed the large bump that exists near Wells? When you're driving up the road or down? Looks like final pavement, so is that there to stay? Let's move on to crosswalk improvements, as we are told they are. Yes, safety is first priority, and adding blinking lights to some of the crosswalks makes complete sense. A counselor noted he knew about the added lights, but as I brought forward concerns about the new alterations to our streets to accommodate these lights, he had no idea. Which makes me realize, did council ever review this plan? Were they really informed of the design changes that altered so much? They, as longtime residents and representatives, may have had good insights. Well, you should all take a close look at Lower Main Street, near the cemetery. A very large protrudence, I refer to it as a jug handle design. I don't know what it really is. It's a bump. Is cut into the road, taking away more parking spaces, I'll add, and jutting out into the street just before the entrance of the Arts Center. Ask yourself, how will that work for snowplowing this winter? More bottleneck of traffic pulling into the Arts Center? Move on over to Worcester Street, at the Charlton Street intersection, and see again the pavement is cut. Another jug handle-looking design to accommodate those blinking lights. But to those, but to whose expense? Vehicles turning onto Charlton Street now have to swing wide to turn. And look at those coming onto Worcester Street. Will their view be further impaired because of the design, making pulling out that much more dangerous? And as with all the other design flaws we have accommodated at intersections, again, it has been narrowed. Try it with a large vehicle or pulling a trailer. Our DPW uses that road a lot. School buses turn there daily. How will it be to navigate the turn once it's complete? These are items still in process, still could be changed, but won't be, no doubt. Lastly, I bring up a very odd observation. Maybe some of you have seen it. Certainly residents who travel Eastford Road have, and have made mention to me and to others, who in turn mention it to me. Earlier this year, the lines were painted, all of them nice white thick lines, including the breakdown lanes. Then oddly, the crack ceiling was done. And lastly, which really blew the minds of the, of the, which, excuse me, which really blew a few minds, was that the road was, I believe it's called fogged, covered in a black residue to prolong the life for sure. But who authorized this? Where was some order of operations? Why did we waste time and taxpayer money to line the road only to cover it up? And the big question, are the lines coming back now? Because the road is just black and very dark at night, and the lines are a great thing. It's too bad we covered them. Citizens want to know, are the lines coming back? We have real road project oversight problem, and it needs attention now. More projects are underway. There are already concerns within the ranks and the professionals who work and reside in this town. This can be corrected. All of these concerns leads back to the leadership, the top, those who make the decisions and who need to lead by example, to be able to pivot, readjust, to admit when things need to be altered, take responsibility for the good and the bad, whether because of lack of oversight or just common sense. I'll leave you with this. Rather than focusing and wasting time and taxpayer money on hearsay harassment claims, administration should focus on DPW management's true harassment, berating, humiliating, and threatening behavior of good, solid employees. Find out why we have lost some top-notch, undervalued employees to neighboring towns. Winter's not far off. We should show concern for the rights and feelings of all our employees. Mr. Town Manager, perhaps you should contact those who've left and conduct exit interviews. Then you might be enlightened. Thank you for your time this evening. It's just my opinion.
Are there any other citizens that would like to approach the podium at this time? Seeing none. Item number nine.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman.
I did neglect to mention earlier, I sent an email at 4 o'clock this afternoon relative to an issue that came up last week. It couldn't get on the agenda in time because of the holiday, but there was a water break in the pipe from the reservoir, Reservoir Number Five, to the water treatment plant, and we're using a backup line, I believe, to, from Reservoir Three at the moment. I know that the Water Department tried to fix it, but we do need to procure some additional assistance. Because of the nature of the break and the amount that it would cost, we had to go through the Department of Capital Asset Management to get an emergency waiver. And so what I did pass out, and I did email late this afternoon, we got approval this morning from DCAM to, that's the Department of Capital Asset Management Maintenance, to do such an emergency repair. Concurrent with the application for that, we did solicit for quotes for the work, and I did provide you the amounts of those quotes to get the necessary equipment in to help with this. So what I'm asking this evening, if you would be inclined, because of the emergency nature of this, to add an agenda item for the town to execute our standard agreement, which I provided as well to you this afternoon and passed out this evening, which we always use for our construction projects here in town, to award to the lowest bidder, which I believe was Morse, in the amount of $13,500 to assist the Water Department in repairing this break due to the emergency and to ensure that we have proper backup water going forward. So I would respectfully ask for your assistance to add that tonight. Otherwise, we would have to wait till our next meeting, which is scheduled for December 6th, unless we were to call another emergency meeting.
Very good. Counselor Ryan?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we waive the rolls and add this item to the agenda.
Subgame. Very good. Any discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Very good. I guess we can take it up now. We'll take it right, right at this moment, if that's okay. Is there a specific motion that you're looking for?
I would just ask that the council move to approve and authorize the Town Manager and the DPW Director to enter into an agreement with Morse Engineering and Construction in the amount of $13,500 and authorize the Town Manager to execute any agreements or other paperwork relative. Submove.
Subgame. Very good. Any discussion? Counsel Jovan?
I would just ask if we could add to that motion as an emergency procurement?
Yes, it is an emergency procurement.
Just so that the records later on would articulate that, please?
Very good. Any further discussion? Very good. All those in favor? Roll call. Mr. Jim? I'm sorry. Very good. Roll call.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Catrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
And Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Unanimous of all present. Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, members of the council.
So you're all set?
Yes.
Okay. Item number nine, vote to approve the proposed precinct changes according to the 2020 census data and sign the 2021 reprecincting letter for the town of Southbridge. Submove.
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. At the meeting, Maddie went into quite an explanation about it. It's just the annual, not, excuse me, not the annual, every 10-year, we have to change the precincts to match the populations. She provided a really in-depth explanation at the Gen Gov meeting. It just moved, basically, a couple of streets were being moved from Precinct Three to Precinct Five and vice versa to help make up some of the population shifts. And it was recommended unanimously by the Subcommittee.
Very good. Anyone else? Very good. Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just really quick, I noticed that on the example that we received for signing, it said 2020 precincting. Is it supposed to be 21?
2020 census.
2020 census. Got it. Thank you, ma'am.
Anyone else? Very good. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 10, vote to confirm the reapportment of Denise Staffieri to the Southbridge Cultural Council effective immediately through June 30, 2024. Ethics in good standing.
Submove. Second.
Mr. Manager?
My office did run and ensure that the ethics were good and standing, and we would just recommend the reapportment.
Very good. Any further discussion? Very good. All those in favor? Anyone opposed?
I just have...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just, I should have raised my hand quickly. I didn't really receive any information on this one. I'm sure that this person is fine. I just didn't receive any, anything in my packet on it.
No, there was nothing.
No, there was nothing in there? Okay.
No. Okay. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 11, vote to confirm the appointment of Pastor Esteban Carrasco as the Fire Department Chaplain for a three-year term effective immediately upon completion of the state ethics training.
Submove. Second.
Counsel Lazo.
Subcommittee voted unanimously in favor to approve the appointment.
Very good. Chief Normanan?
Good evening, everybody, Mrs. Chairman, council members, and Town Manager. Just one little correction on this. It would be Pastor Esteban Carrasco Jr. I was just advised of that. So if we could make that correction within the appointment. As we all know, I'm standing here talking about Mr. Carrasco here, Pastor Carrasco. He's been a leader within our organization in the Fire Department for about the last year, really supporting us emotionally, coming to our fire scenes and et cetera. He's also been working with the Police Department in kind of the same capacity. I don't need to explain to you who Pastor Carrasco is. He's been diligent within town politics here within Southbridge for many years. I feel he's definitely a leader within the religious community, as I explained in PPP. His role will be really definitely a pastoral role for counseling of our members if needed, citizens out there that are having a time of crisis during an incident. He's kind of like the backbone of, if I'm busy running the incident, I can relay to him, say, hey, can you talk to the family or do what needs to be done in that sense, and trying to organize the stuff that needs to be taken care of on that aspect and move forward. But he is here tonight, asked him to come along, so I really appreciate you letting me talk a little bit about Pastor Carrasco, and hopefully we can appoint him tonight.
Very good. Any discussion? Counsel Steves?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess through you, either to Chief or to Esteban. Just a quick question, since obviously these kinds of fire scenes can be extremely traumatic. What kind of trauma counseling background do you actually have?
Thank you. I am currently trained through the Police and Fire, not Fire, not yet, but Police Chaplains Association out of New Jersey. Dealing with crisis there. I'm also a licensed minister through Global Ministries and Relief Organization. I've been an ordained minister through their organization for 12 years. I'm currently in the process with the chief to take C I M, Critical Incident Training Command, with the Fire Department to deal with specific issues that the Fire Department deals with on a daily basis or at a scene.
Okay, that's good. And I was, what I was curious specifically about is, like, do you have a psychology background as in training?
Because of my theology, because of my theology degree, I have taken pastoral counseling. I have taken psychology. I have taken several, several different counseling background courses for specific trauma incidents. On a daily basis, I deal with deaths. I deal with car accidents, family traumas. You name it, I have to deal with it on a daily basis.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Anyone else? Counsel Jovan?
Through you, Pastor Carrasco. Thank you very much for your service to both the Police and the Fire Departments. It is an essential service in the public safety field to have somebody that can assist police officers and firefighters during those moments that we hope were never in. So thank you for your service, and I commend the chief for putting this through so that you can go to the academy and get the formal training to make it even more professional basis. So thank you, because it is a time commitment. So thank you for all that you do for the community of Southbridge, because it's not just this, but what you're doing for the youth and the community is commendable. Thank you, Pastor.
I love my community.
It's very obvious. You're very, very visible throughout the community. You do a nice job of getting out there and doing what's good for the town. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Very well. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present. Thank you. Item number 12, vote to accept a $100 donation from Simons to be used as the Fire Chief's, at the Fire Chief's discretion, for the Fire Department.
Submove. Second.
Counsel Lazo?
The vote was unanimous at Subcommittee to accept this and to approve.
Very good. Chief?
So thank you again, everybody, in regards to this. We generally get maybe once or twice a year, excuse me, donations that are given to the Fire Department. I generally try to use them for meals during storms to reimburse the firefighters, and actually, the DPW gets reimbursed from these type of meal storms that we provide them during heavy snowfalls. Also, I've applied these types of funds that, when they're used at my discretion, for training opportunities or payment for a book or something like that in that aspect. So this is, again, a very small amount, but it's a very large amount for a corporation or a business that can be giving us, you know, a certain amount of money. So thank you very much.
Any discussion? Very well. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present. I would like to thank Simons for their donation and thinking of the town. That's very generous of them. So thank you. Item number 13, vote to approve the Police Chief's Special Traffic Constables Guidelines and allow the hiring of special traffic constables according to Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 91A.
Submove. Second.
Counsel Lazo?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this was approved unanimously. It was a very interesting subject and a dilemma that was coming, and I think our chief is heading it off at the pass, but I think a job well done by the chief. It was unanimous to pass. Thank you.
Chief?
If I could, Mr. Chair, thank you, members of the council, Mr. Town Manager. Just quickly, Pastor Carrasco has also worked for the Police Department for the last year, and he's been invaluable, and I just want to say that during our protests and the police reform movement and everything else. He stood by us when I know a lot of people wouldn't, so I appreciate that. I know he took a lot of heat for that. So anyway, the problems in our community, Counsel Lazo heard this whole thing during Subcommittee, but I'm going to go over it again quickly. It's not unique. It's getting difficult to find people who want to work OT and traffic duty in addition to their regular shifts. Other towns and cities are experiencing similar issues. I mean, everywhere in the country is. I looked some close, some far at cities and towns, some that have similar problems to us, similar demographics. Cities like Lemonster, Framingham, then towns of Southborough, Westborough, they self-hadley. That's just to name a few. They've been using traffic constables to expand their workforce, and it's been very successful there. It's not going to get any easier in the future. The police reform bill, we're going to lose most of our auxiliary police officers. Right now, we have about 20 to 25 auxiliaries, and that's going to get cut down to probably three or four. Because of the reform bill, only the retired police officers are going to be able to stay on board. All the others are going to have to move to another profession, we'll say, because there's not going to be any auxiliaries anywhere in the state. My intent is to keep a pool of special traffic constables from within our current public safety positions, working in the community. This would include firefighters and dispatches, retired police officers, out-of-town officers, corrections officers from the Worcester County Office of Corrections. Our police officers and the out-of-town police officers will still remain armed and still have police powers because they're exempt under the police reform bill. Fire Department and the dispatches, my thinking is they already have training. They're already CPS certified. Half the firefighters are already, are medics. All of them are EMTs. They all know the radio protocols, and ultimately, it's about doing what's best in our community and to keep our residents safe. Any candidates for this position will come through the Town Council, be voted on in three-year terms, just like we have for auxiliaries for the last 30 years. And the reason why I recommend we do the appointments under Chapter 41, Section 91A, is it's transparent. The elected officials know... Section 91A, is it's transparent. The elected officials know who we're bringing forward. They know who the Police Department, who the chief, and who the town manager are recommending, and you ultimately have the final vote on it. I've spoken with our union leadership. They have absolutely no issue with special traffic constables, as long as they always maintain the right of first refusal. I hope to have that language actually negotiated into their contract, which expires in June of 2022. We start negotiations in January with the town manager, and again, I hope to insert this language into that contract, but we'll see where that goes. I've also spoken with the leadership from the Fire Department. The chief's still here. I spoke with our dispatches. Many firefighters and dispatches have expressed interest in working as special traffic constables, so I think it's a win-win for the community. At our Subcommittee meeting last week, there were a few questions about traffic constables, working town jobs like DPW, sewer, water, and I mentioned at that meeting that I wanted to try to keep it between, with full-time police officers. But I mentioned this tonight because I was thinking over the weekend that the average overtime rate for a police officer, and this is average, is $56.60 an hour. And if we can't fill that detail, we usually go to the auxiliaries or out-of-town police officers, and that rate is a flat $52.20 an hour. So it's kind of been a win for the town, a small win, because it's a small savings if a full-time police officer doesn't take this job for water, sewer, DPW, and auxiliary takes it, and there's been no complaints. There's never been any issues because we realize that's small cost savings. With that said, and after doing more research, I don't recommend that we limit our special traffic constables to just doing private details. And the reason for that is, it's simple. If you look at the hourly rates, the average police officer's overtime rate, and not to be too confusing, get too into this, is $56.60 an hour. That's every police officer that works overtime. That's from the highest rate to the lowest rate, from the most senior person to the most junior. The average is about $56.60. The average Fire Department overtime rate, using a similar metric, would be $48 an hour, and the average hourly rate for a dispatcher is $34.09 an hour. So if an out-of-town police officer or a retired police officer takes a town job, they'd be at our detail rate of $52.20 an hour. If a police officer takes that, full-time police officer, it'd be a little over $56 an hour. Fire Department dispatch, again, 48 and 34. So again, you're going to be realizing quite a cost savings for the community in the long run if you use that matrix and project it out through the whole year. It's easy math. It's a great rate. It's a competitive rate. I think it's a great thing for the community. And again, all this is being brought forward. I want to be transparent. I want to continue to provide the highest level of public safety in this community. We have the opportunity, which I think is outstanding, I never thought I'd say this, to have firefighters working in traffic details. They're professional. They're medics, they're EMTs, dispatches. It just, it bolsters our workforce. There are awards employees who already work for the town. Maybe we can even retain some of that are left, some have left. They're fulfilling a need in the community that's, it's really urgently needed. We can't have construction sites unsupervised by public safety, and it expands our workforce. It stops my cops, the men and women who work for us, and have continued to work for us without any complaint from being ordered in every week. So that's my special traffic constable. I'll be happy to take any questions from anybody.
Counsel Mike Hedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. At the Subcommittee level, I did ask you about the pay for special traffic constables, and in your memo, it says full-time police officers assigned to an extra duty detail. And you, you did explain to me that they get a sergeant base pay, which is $34.68 an hour, and then they get time and a half, which is $52.02. So that's where the $52.02 comes from per hour. So the flaggers for the, or the constables will be getting $52.02 per hour?
A special traffic constable, yes, sir, would be getting that $52.02 per hour rate.
Okay, so...
On a private detail.
Okay.
And if I could, Mr. Chair, just to elaborate a little bit?
Certainly.
So if it was a, and I know it gets a little bit confusing here, but if it's a, if it's a town job, and I know we discussed it in great length, and I apologize for kind of bringing this in and throwing you a curveball tonight.
Sorry.
Under the Fair Labor Standards Act, there's a decision, a federal decision, it's actually statute now. You have to pay any full-time employee, so someone who works 40 hours a week, if they work anything over their 40, you have to pay them their time and a half rate. And there's no room for anything, any movement in this. I've taken calls over the years, and I know previous chiefs have, from various officials about why the police are making X amount of dollars, or the sergeant with the master's degree is making this rate when she, she or he is working for the DPW, and why is this... That's federal law. We cannot change that. If we could, we would, but we cannot. So if you're working, if you're a firefighter, I'll use that as an example, and you're working for the DPW, you'll be paid your overtime rate because we can't, we have to pay you that. But in this particular case, it works out because the firefighter or a dispatcher's overtime rate is less, in some cases, almost 10 bucks an hour less than a police officer working that same detail. But that all comes down to that, the federal statute. We can't change it. It's under the FLSA. And also, you're correct with that detail rate. Yes, the sergeant rate, minimum set sergeant, no degree, it's their overtime rate. So $34.68 is their straight time rate, so time and a half would be the $52.02. That's where we get that rate from.
Okay, thank you. The other question that I had at the time was, if, let's say that you, you run out of anybody to work those details, you said you might go to other residents in town. Would they take precedence over somebody like from out of town?
Yes, my intention, and it mentioned that the Subcommittee meeting is absolutely local people. I don't know, you know, if you want me to say that publicly, but they get preference. They know the streets in our community. Just the same reason firefighters and dispatches. They know the radio protocols. They're trained. It's a seamless transition. And any, if there's still space available, or we have spots to fill, I'll have to come back to council. I'll give you the names and reason for recommending them, and you can either vote yes or no on it. But yes, absolute local preference, given to all.
So should we put that as an amendment? Local officials only?
I, I, I would be afraid to put that as an amendment, only because it would lock in, if you have no one from town, that applies, and you need people. You need to go somewhere.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I, I mean, I'd make every effort to hire local for every other position, so we'll put it out, and if we get a qualified local, I'd much rather have a local person who knows the streets and can give directions and just, they know the way that we work here in Southbridge. It just makes sense for us, too. So I have no problem. I'm on the record saying it.
Very good. Any further discussion? Very good. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Item item 14, vote to approve the School Department request to declare two Yamaha golf carts a surplus and allow DPW to examine if they can be salvaged for parts and authorize the town manager to declare all unusable parts to be scrapped.
Tomo, second.
Any, I'm sorry, Counselor Joe, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This came to EHS. Simple request, their surplus. DPW's going to see if they can make one usable unit to retain for the town. If not, then the town manager will dispose of all parts.
Very good. Any further discussion? Very good. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item item 15, vote to approve the updated winter parking van routes for 21, for 2021, 2022.
Tomo, second.
Counsel Mike Hedy.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was approved to send to council, four to nothing.
Okay, any discussion? This is fairly standard. We do this every year. The parking ban is coming up. Snow's coming, so it's on its way. Very good. There being no further discussion. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 16, vote to accept the incentives to convert town rented streetlights from high pressure sodium, HPS, to light emitting diodes, LEDs, and authorize the town manager to sign the application and all related documents.
Tomo, second.
Very good. Counsel Mike Hedy.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was also voted four to nothing to send up to council.
Any further discussion? Counsel Mike Hedy.
It's very difficult to read this, what was handed to us, and I was just wondering, is there something in here that's identifying what lights are going to be changed over?
So I might have a bigger copy that I can kind of tell you. So National Grid has given us a list of, sorry, National Grid has given a list of the streetlights that qualify. It's a very extensive list, so there's 1,205 lights that qualify. So I have an extensive list of the ones that qualify by the size of the light and what they're going to be switched to. So that is part of the documentation that needs to be submitted, that we agree to switch the light sizes. I didn't provide that detail. It's kind of, but it is the National Grid. It's the traditional streetlight on the telephone pole hanging over the edge. It's not the fancier lights that are in the parking lots. It's not those type of lights. These are our traditional streetlights. If that helps.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Very good. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present.
I have one question. I'm sorry.
Certainly.
I apologize. No, it just got me thinking. I know we've talked about streetlights and the exorbitant costs. Do we anticipate savings in this and how much that might be?
I can give you a little bit. They have estimated the savings. Now, this is based on like a typical rate, but right now, our savings based on our basic delivery and luminary charge is going to be an estimated $50,282 per year.
Eight cents. Okay, thank you. Very good. Item number 17, vote to accept bids for the 2021, 2022 winter equipment hire for snow plowing and snow removal and ratify contracts with contractors who have submitted complete bids and authorize the town manager to sign the contract and all related documents.
Tomo, second.
Counselor Mike Hedy.
Well, this was voted four to nothing to send up to council. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Lazo.
May I ask why such a thin amount of contractors? There's only one guy that actually came forward. I know Southbridge has been declining. I don't know if it's the insurance or what it is, but this is like real lean to handle our town.
I agree. So this year, we have one contractor so far that has stepped forward, so I do want to say that, and I want to put it out there right now. If you're interested, we will still keep, take bids in for snow plowing. You can come, still get the package. The way this one works, it's not like a traditional bid. Snow plowing services, actually, we kind of have contract rates, so if you show interest, we'll do our due diligence and check you out, make sure your insurances meet what we need, and, you know, that you have the proper things of that nature. You put in your bid paperwork, and we come to council and ask for your approval. So I will come back as many times as needed to do that. So I have reached out to some of the contractors that have in the past. I know one of them who used to plow for us basically kind of retired, and now that he's retired, the business can't handle having the snow plowing requirement on the list because it's like an extra $1,500. I will say that we do have an incentive here, that if you plow every storm for us, it's $1,000 per piece of equipment. That's one way we're trying to help offset some of that cost, and we did that last year. It also helps make sure that we get every piece of equipment that signs up to come to every storm. So that was something we put in last year. So I, hopefully, will see additional contractors come back, but I can't, you know, it's out there. It's on the street. It's been advertised. It's on our website. You know, we've contacted people in the past that have snow plowed, but I do know part of it, like I said, the one person said, just to have that snow plowing listed on my insurance was $1,500 a year, and they didn't want to put the money out there, not knowing. Which I can understand, but we also have to cover ourselves because if their insurance is less than they, something happens, and we'll be the person that they come after.
Very good. Counsel Lazo.
What is your liability limit that you have to carry in order to work for the town?
So 1 million, 2 million? Plus snow plowing.
In the reality of, of this world, have you ever had any claims against any of the subcontractors that would amount even close to those numbers?
No.
Then why do we carry such a high limit? And I'm asking a question I already know because I carry those limits. They keep jacking up the cost of doing business, and then, you know, like, okay, you're a plowing contractor, and you damage a car, and the car costs eight grand to fix. I still never saw a million dollar or 200,000 or anything like that. So for me, you know, I'm in the plowing business. I don't plow for the town because I am involved in government. I'm in conflict, but I just, to put those kind of insurance things on to us and say, we got to cover ourselves, we're putting ourselves out of business by doing that, cost of operations. I know we used to have a lot of independent drivers, one pickup truck, two pickup trucks, that used to plow for the town of Southbridge that don't plow because I'm in business. I have to carry that limit. But the independents that had one truck or two trucks, they don't carry that. They carry the standard insurance for their vehicle. So I don't know if we can adapt to that or continue to go on the route we're going. It's going to be tougher to get trucks in Southbridge. Thank you.
I do want to just say, we have checked into this multiple times with our insurance carrier, and I understand, and these are our standard contract rates that we have for all of our contracts. We kind of have a standard form, and it comes directly from them on what they recommend. I have voiced my concerns to multiple town managers in the past, even before Ron, because I know we were losing contractors because of the same thing. I will say that we've adapted, and now that the Water Department has included in their contract some plowing services for us, so that has helped us out that way. We do still hire temporary drivers. The School Department, we have an agreement with them to bring in more services, but I, I would welcome, you know, four or five more plow drivers if they could have the limits.
Counsel Lazo.
If we go with the recommendation of an insurance company, the insurance company's worried about the insurance company. We are worried about Southbridge. I know my insurance company constantly is always recommending higher limits, higher limits. But to keep the cost of doing the job down, you have to cut somewhere or limit somewhere. And even in my own business, I mean, there are some limits I carry on vehicles. I carry the lower limit because even if I total my truck and total someone else's truck, still wouldn't top off at the insurance rate that they wanted at the high end. So for myself, as a business, I take insurance companies with a grain of salt. I understand what it's about. It's liability, and if you hurt somebody, that's up, you're sued. But then, some of these limits, I just think are off the wall, and I think they're insurance company driven. And it's your option whether you take it or not. And I know that if you went to the town manager and said it, I understand, you know, the final outcome, but knowing the last town manager, he didn't know much about anything, so I don't have a lot of faith in him. Thank you.
Counsel Joe, ma'am.
Thank you. I just, I'll support this this evening. I'd just like to counsel Lazo's point about the insurance, and if the, if our insurance carriers saying this is what we need to carry, could we have the town manager take a look at through Treasure Collector's office or whatever, the impact of, on what our insurance rates would be if, say, if we decided to drop what we require, what would the insurance company then say? Would change, would that change our rate that they provide to us? Because I'm sure there's some kind of formula in there that says, we require this, you're going to get this rate, but if you drop, you know, and we'll have to do, is there a cost benefit analysis? I'll just defer to that. That's my question. I'll support this tonight because this is a contract. Hopefully we can get more, but maybe a little research on that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item item 18, vote to approve parking permit number P-0155, two-hour parking on Mill Street.
Tomo, second.
Counsel Mike Hedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was approved at DPW Subcommittee by a four to nothing vote. Thank you.
Any discussion?
This is, well, if I could.
Certainly.
This area is after the bridge on, I believe, on one side, on the Green Meadows side, the Mill buildings there.
Yep. This is to increase the two-hour parking that is already existent on the Mill side of Mill Street, I guess, Mill side of Mill Street. But after the bridge, it will install another seven parking places, and the cost of the painting is going to be borne by Green Meadows under basic agreement, so. We won't actually be doing it ourselves, but we're going to allow the permit.
Mr. Chairman, I will be accusing myself.
Very good. Any other discussion? Very good. All those in favor? Seven oh. Item number 19, vote to adopt the draft storm water management rules and regulations. These are the rules and regulations that go with the bylaw. Okay. Do you have anything you need to say or?
Go ahead.
I'll defer to you. Go ahead.
So as Counselor Daniels just stated, as part of the bylaws, we have to pass rules and regulations on how we're going to implement that bylaw. So these are the implementation rules. These are also following the template from our Arcadis who had drafted template from the community storm water management. They have been adapted a little bit to be for our community. They can be adapted more as we see, as we put them in place. They basically are enforcement on any new projects going forward and it also allows us for what needs to be submitted to get the permit. It also allows us to do enforcement actions and take actions if we find illicit connections that are preexisting. So preexisting illicit connection that somebody doesn't know that their washing machine is dumping into the storm drain, it allows us to notify them and tell them that they have to disconnect it in a certain timeframe, work with them to get it disconnected. And if they refuse, then it has a structure for permits and fines and things of that nature. So it basically gives us our structure on how to find if we have to and our ability to basically go and do that investigation work if we need to, along with any new projects. And it splits new projects into larger projects and smaller projects. So like a home is a smaller project. It has a lot less permitting that might be required. It might not require any permitting at all. Larger projects like Case Street, for example, where they might be doing a lot of work on a, like if they didn't have an existing storm water system for their parking lot, it would fall into this permit. So when they go to do construction work and it's going to alter more than an acre of site, then that would become a large project.
Very good. Go ahead, Counsel Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. And this is related to the bylaw, but this is a little bit more detailed than the bylaw, I believe. It involves you creating a committee of yourself and I believe it's the DPW director, deputy director, town planner, conservation agent, inspector of, director of inspections and a designee. It also involves probably adding some more employees to help you out with this because it does say you're allowed to appoint a designated to do the work for this. It's going to include charges, fees, rates, assessments, more taxes on the residents. They're subject to applicable regulations, federal, state and local. The $200 is the fee for minor changes, $800 for major projects. And, well, as I said before, it's an unfunded mandate. I've said it before and that's why I won't support it. I think that the federal government wants it, they should pay for it and that's how I feel about it. So thank you.
Anyone else? Counsel Lazo.
I too am not supporting it. I didn't support the bylaw, the previous vote. Again, it's a mandate from the feds. They hand it down. It's going to cost us much more money to do projects in Southbridge. That's usually why people go away from doing projects because of the cost of doing them. And this is just another layer of bureaucracy on top of development and I just, I can't see it. I know we have a conservation. They do a great job. They're very stringent. The regulations are all there for that, for the waterways and streams. So to me, I'm going to be voting no tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. I'd like a roll call on this.
Counsel Katrona?
No.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Lazo?
No.
Counsel Marketti?
No.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Motion passes five to three. At this time, I'd like to postpone item 20 until a future time.
Do you want a motion? Make a motion to postpone to the next meeting?
Second.
Very good. All those in favor?
Could we have an explanation as to why before we vote on it?
Oh, certainly. We're not prepared to present that at this point. I'm sorry. We're not prepared to present it at this time and.
And this deals with the contract with the DPW union?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. I apologize for that.
No, that's all right. Just wanted to, you know, if residents are listening at home, they understand what we're doing. So if you wanted to hold another vote, I'd be prepared to vote.
No, we're good. No problem. Thank you. Item 21, council's forum. Let's start over here. Counsel Jovan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple items first. Had the opportunity to attend the Veterans Day ceremony. I'd like to thank my colleague Counselor Adams and his other roles for putting that together. It was a very nice ceremony there in the World War Memorial. A lot of great speeches from a variety of speakers, especially the Southbridge High student. I did have an opportunity to speak to Representative Durant and Senator Fatman. Counselor Marketti had asked me, hey, go hit them up for some money. So we are constantly talking to the Senator and the representative relative to fire station project as well as any other projects that they can bring to the town of Southbridge. They did have some conversation about the upcoming infrastructure bills through the State House, so they are working actively on behalf of the town of Southbridge. So I did convey that message, Counsel Marketti.
Thank you.
That you had asked me to. Just a reminder to the residents that the Holiday Visions Parade and Tree Lighting will be November 27th because our next meeting won't be until December 6th. So reminded that the Holiday Visions Parade and Tree Lighting is November 27th at the Town Common with the parade starting at 6:00 PM and then activities at the Common at 6:30, I believe. And finally, just an announcement, I think I bring this up every year. I just want to read this. The Southbridge Cops and Kids and Lions Toy Drive. This is the Steve Ied Memorial Toy Drive. This is a message from Deputy Chief Dinghy, if I could indulge you, from the Southbridge Cops and Kids page. "In love and memory of Steve Ied, over four years ago, Steve Ied insisted that the Toys for Tots operation in Southbridge continue locally after dedicated service of Marines serving in Southbridge location. This operation was relocated to Worcester, to the Worcester area. Steve Ied, a Southbridge Lions Club member, had a vision to keep the program local and partnered with Southbridge Cops and Kids program, birthing the Cops and Kids and Lions Toy Drive. In 2020, Steve Ied lost a vigorous battle to cancer, but continued pushing his vision on the program up until the day he died. I had the pleasure of serving with him on the Lions Club. I personally would like to thank Steve Ied and your family for involving the Cops and Kids program and your vision because together we can make a difference and together we have. Rest in peace. You will forever be missed." The announcement is the Cops and Kids program and the Lions Club members will continue this vision this year and many years to come. That was a message from Steve Ied. So with that, the Cops and Kids and Lions Steve Ied Memorial Toy Drive will start collecting toys, unwrapped toys in the toy drive. So donate new unwrapped, nonviolent toys to benefit local families. And I can tell you, last year, we had a rec number of families that we did service in the area. We also have partners, Southbridge Police Department, the Sturbridge Police Department, Harrington Hospital, Southbridge Town Hall, Southbridge Fire and all Southbridge Credit Union locations. Those locations will accept toys. The donation drop offs will begin on November 22nd and go through December 29th at those locations. There is an application process and we will publish that application process. So anybody that has the ability to give to that worthwhile program, I would suggest that on behalf of Cops and Kids because we did service a lot of families in a need, time of need. So with that, that's all I have this evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Counsel Lazo.
Yeah, I have a couple of things. I'd just like to comment on Green Meadows. If anybody goes down Mill Street and we know we've had some bridge problems and we're going to have the bridge replaced. And in that planning of that, the request from the council was to, when they did their parking lot, to do a curb cut so we could get 18-wheelers into the mill because the mill have a lot of businesses, distributors in the back of the mill and coming, they couldn't come over the bridge at the time because it was shut down and we know we're going to be shut down again because of the bridge being replaced. Well, if you look at the curb cut that Bob Patton and Green Meadows did with their construction project, it's probably the state of the art curb cut that you should have on every single street in Southbridge. And I'd like, I invite people down to see it. An 18-wheeler can come down that narrow street of canal, take a right onto Mill and then a left into the Mill project, into the facility. When you look at this sweeping curve, I share the frustration of the previous speaker tonight, Denise Clements, of the restriction of our streets. We're constantly making things smaller and I just, for the life of me, don't understand the concept, don't understand the philosophy. And I look at pictures of 1963 when they had parking on both sides going down Hamilton Street and they had traffic coming in and out. Now, all of a sudden, we bottleneck because we want one lane. There was always one lane on one side. They put parking on that side back then. We eliminate the parking and we narrow, we almost cut our nose off to spite our face constantly throughout the project. And I'm not blaming anybody. It's piss poor planning, period. And that usually ends up with poor production. And then right to the finish line, I can guarantee you, maybe this council or the next, we'll be putting money in the budget to curb cut back out because of what happens. On Central Street, you don't even have to take my word for it. Look at all the black rubber tire marks that are going over the sidewalk. Terrible. But I got to say, Bob Patton, Green Meadows, got to put a kudo out there. Look at that curb cut. That's what you want in the town of Southbridge. Anything can come down that narrow street and come out of there and take the right turn. Great job. Secondly, I'd like to try to enhance my fellow counselors to maybe look at engaging the state of Massachusetts in a lawsuit pertaining to our schools. We've, I saw that Lawrence, who's been in receivership for 11 years, has engaged in a lawsuit. What I'd like to do is maybe spur discussion in a future meeting for our town manager to look at whether we can piggyback Lawrence's lawsuit to get the state out of Southbridge. Let's be honest, they've been here, I don't know, six, seven years, whatever, and we're second from the bottom in MCAS. We had a level one high school when we started. We had a brand new facility when we started under local jurisdiction. Since they've taken over, we've done nothing but go backwards. Now, I'm not blaming anybody because there is no exit plan, there is no data to allow you to put together to get out of it. There's no blueprint. The state is in a quagmire with these certain towns. They won't take any more over because they know it was the wrong thing to do in the beginning. You know, I don't mind any super oversight of schools by the state, but the minute you take it over, you own it and the state does not pay. Some citizens tell me, oh, we pay the wages out of the state money. No, it comes out of our budgets. With that in mind, I think we need to look at a lawsuit, maybe talk to Education Human Services, Mr. Jovan or the town manager to see what is Lawrence doing, how are they doing it? And let's get involved in the same process or create our own process. Because part of our lack of movement in Southbridge, our weak point, our Achilles heel, is our school system. Everything else seems to be moving forward. New fire stations, new development, registry of motor vehicles. I mean, it seems like things are coming together except the schools. So we need to address that legally and see if there's an option that we have to jump into it with Lawrence. And lastly, it's a sad thing, but we, sad news of the passing of Marcos Rios. The reason why I bring his name up, his family has been the part of the fabric of Southbridge, part of the fabric of the Hispanic community. This gentleman is a very young man. He was a son, a brother, a father, a husband and a true friend. Just like, you know, my deepest sympathy to the family and to the residents of Southbridge at the loss of one of our hometown boys. He was a fantastic person. Thank you, Ms. Jim.
Very good. Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, I forgot to mention it earlier. Our next general government meeting will be on the 29th at 7:00 PM in the Veterans Room. That's it, Mr. Chair.
That's it. Very good. Counsel Steves.
I don't have anything to say.
Okay. Counsel Katrona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I'd like to say thanks to Holiday Visions, Denise Clements and her, and the volunteers, the elves and all the volunteers that came out to put out the holiday decorations. It's a huge undertaking and I've been there, I've done that with her. I could not this year, but it makes Southbridge ready for the Christmas spirit. Also, as my Counsel mentioned earlier, the parade and tree lighting on November 27th at 7:00 PM. Something else, maybe DPW Subcommittee and can, maybe we can have future discussion on Main Street, Dudley River Road and Page Hill, if that's acceptable. That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to talk tonight about the Capital Planning Ad Hoc Committee. We're planning on meeting on December 2nd and I believe that will be our last meeting. I just wanted to say that, you know, although I have invited the receiver to attend our meetings, so far he's declined. And so I was surprised the other night when I watched the school committee meeting and I saw the school receiver devote an entire school meeting to capital needs. He's advocating for a $26 million investment in school buildings. I would like to point out that our capital needs is a town council decision and not the school committee. He asked the school committee to advocate for his capital needs. I think the Capital Planning Committee is a committee that would be better suited to advocate for his capital needs. And so I would prefer that the receiver stick to discussing his plans for improving education of our students at the school committee meetings. And that's why the state sent him to Southbridge to begin with. I don't really feel like funding his school capital needs until he appears before our committee or even general government Subcommittee meeting. Otherwise, in my own opinion, it's like he's doing an end around the committee by going directly to the council. And if successful, I would think that that would create a precedent for anyone seeking capital improvements. So if that's the way it's going to be, then maybe, I don't see the reason to have a general government or a capital planning committees if they're just going to go wherever they want, whenever they want. So again, our Capital Planning Committee is December 2nd, 2021, 6:00 PM at the Town Hall. And I'm, again, extending an invitation to the school receiver for him to attend or to send a representative to attend our meeting. As far as the road issue goes, I heard Counsel Clements tonight and I heard in earful of the issues the night after the DPW Subcommittee meeting, but I would like to point out, I didn't hear these things until after the meeting. If somebody wants to bring these issues to my attention, I would be happy to put them on the DPW Subcommittee meeting. I have no problem talking about it whatsoever. To Counsel Katrona, I have no problem bringing those up. Bring them, send it to me in advance. I will put it on the committee agenda. And finally, I'd like to thank Counsel Adams and the Veterans Agent Keith Roberts for the Veterans Day ceremony at the World War Memorial on Thursday. It was a nice sunny day. You couldn't ask for better weather. It was good to hear from the high school band and the student and it was good to see our state reps there and I'm glad that Counsel Jovan spoke to them about some of the needs for Southbridge. So thank you very much for putting on that ceremony. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Roystar Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Counsel Marketti. I appreciate that. I just want to give a, Jorlos Diaz is the one who.
the issues the night after the DPW Subcommittee meeting, but I would like to point out, I didn't hear these things until after the meeting. If somebody wants to bring these issues to my attention, I would be happy to put them on the DPW Subcommittee meeting. I have no problem talking about it whatsoever. To Counsel Katrona, I have no problem bringing those up. Bring them, send it to me in advance, I will put it on the committee agenda. And finally, I'd like to thank Counselor Adams and the Veterans Agent Keith Roberts for the Veterans Day ceremony at the World War Memorial on Thursday. It was a nice sunny day, you couldn't ask for better weather. It was good to hear from the high school band and the student and it was good to see our state reps there and I'm glad that Counsel Jovan spoke to them about some of the needs for Southbridge. So thank you very much for putting on that ceremony. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Vice Chair Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Counselor Marquetti. I appreciate that. I just want to give a, Droulis Diaz is the one who spoke and she was so nervous before getting up there to speak at Veterans Day, but she knocked it out of the park. She, it was a beautiful speech that she gave and I couldn't be happier to be able to bring, us bring back the high school and students back into these ceremonies. Long time coming and it really has helped out quite a bit. We no longer have an issue about finding speakers anymore like we used to a couple years ago, so it's a great thing. I just want to talk about the Lions Club and the Cops and Kids with this Toys for Tots drive. I know a little bit about this type of drive. It used to be for the Marine Corps Reserve and then they made, couldn't do the reserve anymore because they didn't want to pay them and became active duty and the active duty had a lot of, didn't have a lot of time on their hands and then they pushed it over to old posts, veterans posts, and it didn't really pan out, especially if you're not around a military base or a well-functioning veterans post. And then it's panning off onto private organizations within towns, which is a good thing because I think they touch bases quite familiar with themselves and their families around there and it's a great thing for kids to be able to receive an open package, a Christmas gift from the local community and from Santa. So it's a really enlightens, it's really enlightening when you see the kids smile. Green Meadows invited me to ribbon cutting ceremony on Veterans Day and I just wanted to say thank you to them for all the hard work they did, but it was a well-attended event and a lot of things that they did for the veterans through that whole weekend was pretty amazing. Caveat off of Chairman Daniel about second chance, I got to see it after coming back from Oxford. Pretty amazing what Bay Path had done and helped out with for second chance. I know we have our boxer through second chance and gave her a new life. So I want to thank them for everything they do. I'm glad they expanded in our community alone. And I will say, I apologize for the Veterans Day ceremony. We put it on, pushed it on the event on Facebook and on my Facebook page, it said 11 o'clock. On others, it said 12 and then we tried to readjust and it went from 11 to 10 and then we just said, forget about it. Hopefully everybody knows it's on the 11th hour, on the 11th day of the 11th month. And we're hoping and praying it was well attended. Counsel Marquetti, Counsel Daniel, Counsel Jovan, and I forgive, I forget if anybody, other counselors showed up, but I appreciate you guys' support on that whole thing and it was very well attended for a weekday. Lastly, I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. We'll see you again till after December 1st, so again, wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair. Item number 22, discussion of the next meeting date, Monday, December 6th at 7:00 PM here in the dais.
Very good. Item 23, adjourned?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries. We are adjourned.